To have conversations, please take them outside of the room. In conformance with the open meeting law, I'm informing you that this meeting is being livestreamed. Finally, if you're here to speak either in support or in opposition to a project, put your name and address on the record and give us new information. We are here to fact find, so please don't repeat what somebody else has said. Give us new information. Mr. Galvin?
Galvin.
Sorry.
I changed it back to Galvin. I'm gonna make a motion to approve the August 14th minutes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
So at this time, we're gonna call for the extensions, the 9:30 extensions. The first case being called is BOA 478-237, 57R Sedwick Street. And there's a companion case, BOA 478-232, 57 Sedwick Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Amy Moret, 57 Sedwick Street, Jamaica Plain.
So tell us why you're here.
We need an extension for the variance for a construction project on our property.
And when did you get the approval?
We got the approval from the VRA.
From here, from the board?
From here, oh, last year.
Last year, okay. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to extend for one year.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You're all set, good luck.
Thank you.
Calling next case for extension, calling BOA 541-506, 392 Cambridge Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Mark Wacass, Wacass Law, 75 Arlington Street, Boston, Mass. Attorney for the applicant. This is a request for an extension. The relief was originally granted by this Board in May of 2016. Subsequently, there was a lawsuit filed in Suffolk Superior Court challenging the zoning relief. That was ultimately settled and resolved, dismissed by the court on September 27, 2016, at which point the decision became final. All of the BPDA Article 80 process has been completed, except for a few items which remain, which precipitates the request for an extension. We need to complete the execution of the IDP agreement and obtain our final certification of completion under Article 80, but otherwise...
So is our approval still valid, or is it beyond the two years?
It is still valid. It is my understanding that this Board takes the position that the decision does not become final until a Superior Court challenge of your relief has been dismissed and not occurred on September 27, 2016.
Okay. May I have a motion?
Motion for one-year extension.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set.
Thank you so much.
Calling next case for Board final arbiter, calling BOA 498-302-51 Silver Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board. My name is George Maransy. I'm an attorney with a business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. Madam Chair, members, this matter was originally before the Board on October 20, 2015, where, like, clients' applications just were approved for a new five-story building containing nine residential units and garage parking for 18 vehicles. The building is built substantially complete, or at the pre-signative occupancy stage. During construction, it came evident to my client that he could use a different vehicle lift system than what was originally approved by this Board for the 18 garage parking spaces. Instead of independent lifts, he's proposing to install two Matrix systems that would, in about the same space, actually a little bit less space, be able to accommodate 22 vehicles rather than the 18 originally approved. Inspection Services Department insists that the number of parking spaces, as recited either in the original application or in any decision of this Board, match the issued certificate of occupancy. The issued certificate of occupancy needs to match the fuel storage permit from the Committee on Licenses.
Just connect the dots.
Correct. So they do require, that's why I'm periodically back here, where there's an increase in parking, so that the record can properly reflect what this Board approved.
Okay, and does that mean that your parking variance goes away?
No, because the Board doesn't credit each space, each slot in an automated system as a parking space for purposes of convenience, because each parking slot doesn't have a dependent on the comfort access. So that's something that they need to figure, I think, to go make catch-up.
Do you have a question, sir?
Yeah, can you describe how this new system works?
Yeah, it's the Matrix system, so I really do only have a fluid plant in the garage in front of you, but it's two levels, so there are eight, or actually, there are three levels, I guess, and there are, there's always one empty spot. So there's always an open, opening at the bottom, you drive in, and then the system actually moves the cars around. It's the system that's been described to this Board before, it's far back and activated, that actually is an intelligent system, so that each car is in a particular slot and it begins to learn driving habits. It has cars ready in the morning, in the order that they typically are requested, kind of nice, until it becomes self-aware.
Where's this from?
I believe this is...
Any other questions? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set.
Calling next two cases for G Card. Calling BOA 860-179, 362 Marlborough Street. There is a companion case, I believe, 352. BOA 860-183, 352 Marlborough Street. This is for 362. This is a change of occupancy to a single-family dwelling, direct-to-rare addition with deck atop, in addition, the roof deck with access hatch. Repair brick, complete interior renovation of all floors, replacing all new mechanicals, and raising of the brick-guarding wall. Violation's Article 32, Section 9, G Card enforcement. This is for 352 Marlborough Street. This is exterior renovations. In addition of a penthouse structure, repair exterior brick and stone, windows, underground utilities, and groundwater recharge system, and change of occupancy from a one-family and a lodging house to a one-family. The violation's Article 32, Section 9, G Card enforcement. Name and address for the record, please.
Mark Howland, 15 Pleasant Avenue, Somerville, Massachusetts.
So tell us what you're proposing.
We're proposing a renovation of 352 and 362 Marlborough Street, and that triggers a groundwater conservation overlay district review. We have letters of approval from the Boston Water and Sewer Department, and we've communicated with the Groundwater Trust, Christian Simonelli.
Okay. Thank you.
We also have a BBAC review.
Thank you. Christian?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Christian Simonelli, Boston Groundwater Trust, and we also have the approval letters from Boston Water and Sewer for both addresses. In addition, we also have the no harm letter for 362 Marlborough Street.
Do you have that in the...
Madam Chair, we have both letters, thank you.
Do you have a motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set, good luck.
Calling the 9:30 hearing for deferrals or withdrawals only. Deferrals or withdrawals only. Are there any deferrals or withdrawals for 9:30? Having none, we'll call the first case, calling BOA 849-225-10 Trenton Street. Is Trenton Street here? Okay. This is to build a new third-floor addition. The violation's Article 9, Section 1. It's reconstruction of an extension of a nonconforming building. Article 62, Section 25, roof structure restrictions. Article 62, Section 8, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. And Article 62, Section 8, the side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Stephen Pettiford, 700 Stimson Street, West Rockery. I'm the architect for the project. The majority of the violations are due to the nonconformance of the existing building. The only new violation that we're adding is by doing the change of roof structure. And essentially, what we're doing is adding a dormer to both sides of the building in order for the existing bedroom and existing bathroom to actually have a better usable space.
So tell us, what's the zoning district that this is in?
I believe it's a... 3F 2000.
3F 2000, and this is a two-family?
Two-family.
It's a two-family. And how much, what is the square footage anticipated for both dormers? Total square footage?
The total square footage added is about 200 square feet.
200 square feet. How are the plans, Mr. Pizzani?
The drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the Board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. My name's Quinnan Locke, I'm from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to go on record in full support of this project. When a Butters meeting was held, Director Butters were attending, and there were no issues at this time. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thanks.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set, good luck.
Calling BOA 858-259, 51 Chappy Street. This is demolition of an existing two-family, construct a new three-unit building. The violation's Article 9, Section...
You're surprised, you're all set.
Your violation's Article 9, Section 1, extension of a nonconforming use. Ancillary parking at 478 Medford Street. Article 62, Section 29, off-street parking, access maneuverability and location design. Article 62, Section 30, traffic visibility across a corner by a motor vehicle is 2.5 feet. Article 62, Section 7, ancillary parking to the main use of 478 Medford Street is forbidden. Article 62, Section 7, three-family use is forbidden. Article 62, Section 8, the number of allowed stories has been exceeded, 2 and 1/2 is the max. Article 62, Section 8, insufficient side yard setback, 5 feet is required. Article 62, Section 8, insufficient open space, 450 square feet unit is required. And Article 62, Section 8, reduction is usable in open space, ancillary parking at 478 Medford Street. Article 62, Section 29, off-street parking loading in requirements. Name and address for the record, please.
Mark Shaw, 151 Chappy Street in Charleston.
Tim Sheehan, Charleston as well, I'm the architect for the project.
Kathy Chidwong, 51 Chappy Street.
So tell us what's being proposed.
So we're proposing to demolish 51 Chappy Street and construct a new three-unit dwelling for my wife and my kids, my parents, and my younger brother as well.
Okay. You've been here before. Can you speak, walk through the violations, and I'm specifically concerned and interested in the ancillary parking at 478 Medford Street after you've gone through the rest of the violations? Because if there's ancillary parking, 478 should be here as a companion case, because that creates a violation on that parcel. But in the meantime, just go through the violations.
Okay, well, basically, the first of the violations is floor-to-air ratio. So we are, you know, we're putting, it's a two-family zone right now, and the lot's 3,800 square feet. You know, we're proposing to put in 3,800 square feet, so we are right there with that.
So the FPR is 1, and probably the required is .8?
It's .8, yeah, we're over.
Okay.
The height is gonna be 37 feet from sidewalk average to rooftop, so that's 2 feet over, and we love 35 feet.
Okay.
The building, you know, as you look at it from the street, the basement is up out of the ground considerably, but it's low enough where it'd be considered a three-story building.
And why is that?
Oh, just because it's into the hill. As the hill comes down, it pushes, basically, the grade works around the building. So when you look at it from behind on the sides, it's more of a regular three-story building, but it uncovers the front, just the way that big terrain is. Part of the violation for us is since it's a three-family building, we should have four spots, 1.5 per unit, but we actually round down to four, but we only have room for two spots. Interesting thing about the project next to it that you mentioned is that's a family as well. So right now, just by the way you look, there's three spots there, and I think the problem was, before 78, that spot you're talking about was supposed to be landscaping. I think when we did the project 15 years ago, a tree, and it's never happened, so...
So landscaping was required or was approved through this Board, and that never happened? It was parking all these years, and now you're asking us to approve something that just got put in despite our request?
Yeah, I don't know, I mean, we've gone to the VRA already, and they're willing to work with us if we do some landscaping on that corner. I don't know why it didn't happen.
And my concern really is that today, it's in joint ownership. What happens when one of the parcels gets sold? And that creates, and we have to look at these projects long-term, because the community will bear the brunt of it long-term.
Yeah.
So, so go ahead. And do you have the plans for Medford Street to Mr. Pizzani, so that we can see the synergy there?
No, we just have the plans for Chappy. Do you have...
No, we don't, we don't have the plans for the corner, we don't. But I mean, yeah, actually...
Please share it with Mr. Pizzani.
And that's what they're talking about, right there, 478, it's 478, 480, it's a little piece of land right there. Right now, they're putting three cars on it, and that little rectangle, we're supposed to be landscaping.
I want to pass this down, because the issue is parking on a corner, right? The issue is that on the Medford Street, you're, we're actually parking on the corner of Chappy.
Yes.
So I guess the question is, if we should look at these in conjunction, whether it's worth, you know, destroying this or deferring it until the cases catch up with each other? You know, because if you are counting space somewhere else, is that space already there for that unit? We kind of need to understand that dynamic, so...
Yeah, it wasn't, I mean, that wasn't a parking, on the other side of that development, there was one parking space included in the zoning. Because the way the parcels break up, that wasn't really a spot.
So just to make this complete, first time around, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, other date, please.
We are into November, November 13th.
I know. That happens sometimes. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And so please make sure that we look at it completely, so that in the long term, it's not gonna have a negative impact.
So basically, both parcels coming at that time.
Yep, yep.
Calling next three cases, calling BOA 828-534, 19 to 21 Lancaster Street. There's two companion cases, BOA 828-537, 31 to 39 Lancaster Street. BOA 828-538, 73 to 75 Carsway Street. But this is for 19 to 21 Lancaster, it's a different purpose, but same violation. The applicant seeks to continue the used premises for public parking lot-free fee, a capacity of 17 spaces beyond existing expiration date of December 31, 2018. This is also in conjunction with a joint premise of the 73 and 75 Carsway Street and 31, 39 Lancaster Street. The violation's Article 6, Section 3A, additional condition of restricted parking district. Again, this is for 31, 39 Lancaster, it's the same violation, so I won't read that, but the applicant seeks to continue use of premises for public parking for a fee, a capacity of 31 spaces beyond the existing expiration date of December 31, 2018. And this is for 73 to 75 Carsway Street. The applicant seeks to continue the premises for public parking for two handicap parking spaces beyond the existing expiration date of December 31, 2018. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Attorney David Gottlieb, Law Offices of Edward A. Gottlieb, 309 Washington Street, Brighton, MA 02135. I'm gonna start off with 19 to 21 Lancaster Street. I presented before the Downtown North Association meeting on May 31, 2018, regarding the current use and our filing and application to request an extension for this use for three years. The meeting was positive, and Downtown North Association agreed to support our application. I also spoke over the phone with Susan Benoit, Chair of the Zoning and Planning at the West End Civic Association.
So we're familiar, is that your father who comes here frequently for these?
Yes.
Okay.
He is.
Okay. So this is a total of 48 regular parking spots and two handicap spots?
Correct. That would be 50 total parking spots.
Fifty spots.
For the three applications, the three properties.
Okay.
Correct.
And when this project was with this Board, before this Board in the past, was there a screening and buffering requirement?
There was, and as I meant to introduce some photos, I would like you to take a look at some photos. And I'd also like to have you look at the most recent plan. We went through a Boston Planning and Development Agency design review the last time we were at the Board. That was a rigorous review. As a result of that review, we had to install new planting on Lancaster Street at the property at 31 to 39 Lancaster Street. You're gonna see flowers installed in a concrete enclosure surrounding it. That should be one of, that should be photo one, right here. The other...
Is that against the building that, the building with the garage door?
No, no, that's with a fence. There's a fence on the street, and you're gonna look, when the car would come in from Lancaster Street, from the curb cut, we installed planting. It's right there, it says "New Perennial Flower Planter" on the new plant. You're also gonna see on Carsway Street...
Yep.
There are, at the property at 73, 75 Carsway Street, if you also look at the photos, photo two and photo number four, you're going to see two trees planted there. Two fairly prominent large trees. They border both sides of the existing building. There's an existing building on Carsway and Lancaster, and there's an existing building further down Carsway Street. Two fairly large prominent trees there that are doing fairly well.
Okay.
If you also look on Lancaster Street, if you look at photo number three and photo number five, you're gonna see two photos of the tree that's on the corner of the second entrance from Lancaster Street, that's also has a fence in front of it, and it's enclosed by a concrete barrier. There's a planter there and the tree installed. So there's two entrances on Lancaster Street, both of them have fairly prominent landscaping.
If you're looking at Stanley Lancaster, if you're looking at the parcel, first of all, what is the function of the building in between the two parking spaces?
This is an existing building, so...
No, no, I understand that.
I can get back, I can get, but that's not in...
But there's a garage, is there parking there?
No.
Okay. Okay. I'm looking at the smaller parcel on the right.
Correct.
And in this photo, I don't see any planting.
No, there is not.
So only on the other one?
Correct.
Was this also supposed to get screening and buffering?
That, I don't, I don't, I mean, I don't believe, I don't believe so.
So which parcel is this?
That's 19 to 21 Lancaster.
Okay. Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Pizzani?
The drawings are adequate. So going back to the landscaping, screening, and buffering.
Correct.
19 to 21 is zero.
Correct. I included a photo to show you the fence, it's in good condition, but there's no landscaping there, no. But wasn't that a proviso on the previous approval? I do not, I do not believe so.
Mr. Pizzani, we can deal with that.
With all due respect, I went through the Boston Planning and Development Agency design review, and I go down there, I take photos, and the design review person says, "This is what you need to do."
Who's your design review? Who was it?
Matthew Martin, yeah, Matthew Martin.
And any other questions from the Board?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'm just curious. I'm looking at 31 Lancaster Street.
Correct.
I just had a quick question. You have three porto-potties on site.
Is there a porto-potty closest to that existing building?
Right.
Towards 19 to 21 Lancaster Street, correct.
There's just one, or there's...
I know there's at least one several days ago, because these photos are dated September 4th.
Okay.
But I can check on that.
I'm just curious on why you would need three in a place there.
So I will ask, what I know, as you can see...
And they're not really good-looking things to take a look at, and I don't know if they're clean hopefully every day, but...
Okay. I know there is at least, there was at least one several days ago.
Okay.
On September 4th. I can check if there's now three, but I know there was at least one several days ago.
Okay.
Is the policy one is okay, or you would rather have none?
We'll hold on to that. So, and your hours of operation?
The hours are fairly extensive. It goes from Monday through Friday, 6:00 a.m. to close, Saturday and Sunday, 8:00 a.m. to close. And close can, I mean, it depends on the events at the, of course, the garden of the street, so sometimes those events last fairly late.
Okay.
But I would say it usually is late into the night, if not into the early morning, if there's a late game.
Okay.
You do have signage that says you close at 4, 6:00 a.m. to 4.
Correct. I'm looking here actually at the signage right at 19 to...
Stand home, yeah.
Yeah, 19 to 21 Lancaster Street, so there's actually a photo that I took there.
Yeah.
Okay.
It lasts, lasts very late, or into the morning.
Do we have these? You need them?
For the record.
No, no, that's for the record. And I also would like to enter a letter to the West End Civic Association for our support.
Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Maria Lanza, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support for a three-year extension, as does the West End Civic Association and the Downtown North Association, which also voted for a three-year extension on this. Thank you.
Marang of the Chair, members of the Board, Anna from Councilor Flynn's office, we would also like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion for a three-year extension.
With continued screening above.
Yes.
Is three years, or do we usually go two years?
I think three years is what the city's looking for.
I would ask for three, you know.
But with extensive screening and buffering.
Yes, and we need specifically the VRA staff to focus on 19 to 21 Lancaster Street for screening and buffering. That seems to have been the orphan property. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set, good luck.
Calling BOA 841-381, 56A to 56 Berkeley Street. This is to convert the basement fitness room and most of the first-floor front-office space into guest rooms, thereby increasing the total unit count from 12 to 14. Interior fit-out with no expansion of existing building envelope and no scope of existing second, third, or fourth floors. The violation's Article 9, Section 1, adding two rooms for existing is forbidden use. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Attorney Nixon Zula McDermott, William Miller, 28th State Street, Suite 802 in Boston. With me to my immediate right is Morgan Pearson from the appellant, and to my far right's Derek Rubenoff, who is the architect in the project. This is a pretty simple one. The property's located in the south end, it's on Berkeley Street, between Appleton Street and Lawrence Street. It's about 6 to 8 minutes from Back Bay Station. This is an existing hotel, it's been there since 2009, since 2010. It's under new ownership by the appellant, who's before you today. They bought it earlier this year. And what they're looking to do is they're proposing to convert an existing basement fitness room and part of a first-floor management office into two new hotel rooms. And this is an interior fit-out, there's no expansion of the existing building, there's no exterior changes to the building. The total guest rooms that's there now is 12, and this would add two, making it 14. We are here because we require an extension of non- We are here because we require an extension of non-conforming use. Back in two thousand nine, two thousand ten, this board approved the hotel use, which is a forbidden use in the zoning district. So we're merely looking to extend that relief to those two additional rooms, which is a conditional use permit under nine dash one.
So is there, is there just not going to be a management office, or where does it relocate?
There will be a much smaller, there'll be a much smaller management office. Also, the appellant owns Forty Berkeley, which is a few doors down where they have a much larger management office that they'll have staff there as well. Basically, the management office and the fitness room just were very lightly used and the use could be better served for two additional rooms in the city. You know, to add to the...
At very reasonable rates, actually.
For the neighborhood, yes.
Who's the owner, who's the...
The owner is fifty-six dash fifty-six A Berkeley Street LLC, that's the entity that owns the property, but it's owned by Mount Vernon Company.
Mount Vernon.
Is the ultimate owner, and they own Forty Berkeley as well.
Yep.
We did hold in a butter meeting on July tenth, it was lightly attended. I did submit a letter of non-opposition from the Ellis South End Neighborhood Association as well.
We have that.
Who found no, found no issue with the application.
How are the plans, Mr. Bazani?
The drawings are adequate.
Any further questions from the board?
I do have a question. The two new rooms being added as guest rooms have natural light and ventilation?
Yes.
Any other questions from the board, is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Faisal Sharif with Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go in record support for this proposal. We did hold in a butters meeting, they also met with the civic association. There aren't any impacts of concern for the neighborhood, thank you.
Good morning, Madam of the chair, members of the board, Anna Calderon from Councilor Fling's office. We would also like to go on record in support, thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion for approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries, you're all set.
Thank you very much.
Calling BOA eight-four-six-three-five-three-six-seven Arlington Street. This is a build-a-balcony, a loft area in the existing living room, cathedral ceiling, rework the existing stairs, keeping existing steel stringers. The violation is Article fifteen, section one, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Attorney Eugene Kelly, two-two-three Commonwealth Avenue. I'm here with the architect and also the owner of the condominium unit. This, just a quick little history if you might be interested. The original, this is at the corner of Arlington Street and Marlborough Street. And it's a twelve-story building. And it was originally two townhouses that were torn down in the nineteen twenties. And the Junior League of Boston bought it, bought the land and built their headquarters there and women's rooms. And they also built a ballroom for their parties. This unit encompasses the ballroom. Just a little back. And then it became the Catherine Gibbs School, and then it was converted to condominiums. So you've probably, you've been by it numerous times. We had a butters meeting on July sixteenth, mostly all people from the building who attended, we had no problem.
Mr. Kelly, so the F A R, what is this, what is the addition, how many square feet?
Well, I think the best thing for the architect to go on.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning, I'm Jacob Albert from Albert Ryder and Tiffman Architects at two-sixty-two Washington Street, a block from here. And I can show you what the proposal is. I think you have a copy of this drawing, which shows the unit. The unit is two floors and part of it is a double-height living room. The proposal is to add a balcony in one end of the double-height living room. The balcony would be a hundred and six square feet. The total size of the unit is two thousand eighty-two square feet.
Okay, thank you.
The second drawing shows it in context of the whole building. The building is over forty-five thousand square feet. So our addition of the balcony would add point-two-three percent to that area or two-point-three-one-thousandths of the building. And the work proposed is entirely inside the building and has no, results in no change to the exterior of the building.
Thank you, how are the plans, Mr. Bazani?
The drawings are terrific, relative to a point-zero-zero square foot address.
That's right, for one hundred and six square feet. Any other question, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak, go ahead.
I submitted letters from the condominium board approving the construction and also supporting the variance. Also, I have a letter from the zoning committee of the Back Bay Neighborhood Association of non-opposition. And I also have the attendance records for those who attended the butters meeting.
Thank you. Just so...
Madam Chair, members of the board, just so, we're with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support, there's absolutely no opposition or questions to this case. They have unanimous support from the community and people are excited to see this board completed. Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion for approval.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries, you're all set, good luck.
Calling BOA eight-two-zero-four-six-four-one-thirty-seven Penn Street. This is to confirm occupancy as a three-family, remodel of the existing house on all four floors, new roof deck, installer's sprinkler system. Violation is twenty-seven, Article twenty-seven S, section five, this is in the South Boston iPod applicability, and Article sixty-eight, section eight, the F A R is excessive to the basement extension. Name and address for the record, please.
And the door team is exactly where?
Well, it's not quite in... If you look on the plan on drawing A1 on the ground floor plan, in the lower right corner, it's not a door, but we put a casement window in there, which doesn't have anything over it. So that'd be like a four by thirty-two inch casement egress window, really.
Okay.
Just those two windows.
So it's just a matter of the section wasn't cut, all right?
Yeah, exactly. There was an existing portion of that and then...
Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. My name is Faisal Sharif with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. On behalf of John Allison, we would like to go on record in support. However, we do want to note that Director Butters did have concerns about the roof deck, specifically about the size of it, and we would like the applicants to continue working with their Butters regarding the size of that and consider scaling down a bit. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Anna Calderon from Councilor Flynn's office. We would like to go on record in opposition to this proposal. There is a large concern with direct up Butters on the roof deck, and we would like that to be addressed before this getting an approval from the board. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Paul Sullivan, and we have City Council at Large, Michael Flaherty. Council like to go on record in opposition, standing with the Director Butters. Not only does this project fall into Article sixty-eight, but prior to today, the proponent has actually already started construction. Due to those facts, the council is in opposition.
Hi, Chelsea Blanchard, owner of an abutting property at 131 N Street. I'm actually here to represent a group of neighbors that are opposed to this project.
And what is your opposition based on?
We are opposed to the increase in FAR. We are opposed to the existence of the roof deck at all, and we are also opposed to how the project has been handled. It has been completely developed without proper permits. This developer proceeded to do all of the work in the basement, including the excavation for the additional FAR, based on his short form permit, and it's just... It's been a disaster. There is currently a stop work order issued on the project. In addition, we are also opposed to the development of three units in this tiny building. They are conducive only to single people, not families, and that's not the type of development we want to see on this block. The roof deck, as any roof deck in this City Point area lately that has been approved, it causes problems. We, as Butters, really suffer from these roof decks. It's a little bit like living in a neighborhood that feels like Mardi Gras.
Thank you.
Thank you for your hearing.
Okay. Anybody else to speak in opposition? Mr. Moranci?
Madam Chair, I can let my client speak as to the progress of construction. I typically disfavor doing this, but given the vehemence of the previous speaker's testimony about roof decks, I do have to point out the condescension that, again, the previous speaker identified as the owner of 131 N Street. 131 N Street was in fact approved for variance for a roof deck in December 2017. So I think roof decks are quite a bit the norm here, and I just think it's ironic that the roof deck is being claimed for its current existence. I understand the confusion about the size. My client will be perfectly happy and willing to work with the BPDA design review.
So tell us about the construction, prior construction for... Tell us about that construction.
Well, we had a demo permit. We started doing the demolition, and we just got ahead of ourselves while we were in the stop work order. Exceeding the grounds.
How far ahead did you get?
We've framed in force. I started this process...
I mean, that's not something that you just happen to fall into.
Well, we started the process in February, and it doesn't always take this long. It seems to have taken forever to get to here when I started this process in February.
Okay. So this process started in February. When did construction begin? Or demolition? Oh, I see. So you were working on it in anticipation of this?
Yes.
Of this? Okay. Any other questions from the board? May I have a motion?
I want to make a motion to approve... I'm going to request that the developer and their team work closely with the neighborhood and BPDA on the size of the deck and continue to be a good neighbor.
And this is approval with design review?
Yes.
Since we're... Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Calling next... Calling BOA eight-three-eight-five-five-two-four-twenty-two East Fifth Street. This is a change of occupancy from a two-family to a single-family, legalizing the existing... Remove the existing roof to construct a new third-floor addition with front deck to extend living space to an existing building. The violation is Article sixty-eight, Section twenty-nine, roof structure restrictions, and Article sixty-eight, Section eight, side yard is insufficient. No roof should be structured... Shall be erected or enlarged on the roof of an existing residential building, and such a construction relocates or alters the profile and the configuration of a roof of a mansard. Name and address for the record, please.
Doug Stefanov, ninety-three F Street, architect. And with me is Jay Landstein, four-twenty-two East Fifth Street, his wife and family.
So tell us what's being proposed.
We'd like to put an addition on top of this building to add some living space.
And what is that addition composed of?
It exists of a five-hundred-and-eighty-square-foot room at the top floor, which is set back from the street. There's a roof deck, which is behind the existing parapet. The structure is rear justified and actually would be lower than the existing roof at present.
And how many bedrooms in this unit?
There are four currently, and there would still be four.
And this would be just flexible space?
Living space.
How are the plans, Mr. Bezani?
Plans are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. My name is Faisal Sharif with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. On behalf of John Allison, we'd also like to go in support of this project. Again, we do request that they work with BPDA with regards to design review. Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Madam Chair?
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Anna Calderon from Councilor Flynn's office. We would like to go on record in opposition to this project. This is an Article sixty-eight project, and so that's why we're opposing. Thank you.
Okay.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Paul Sullivan, and we have City Council at Large, Michael Flaherty. Council, we're also going to record in opposition.
Okay, thank you. It's interesting, because that iPod wasn't cited as a violation. Okay, so even...
Madam Chair, it's less than a thousand.
She knows, yes.
May I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve...
One second.
With... Do they need design... Yeah, with continued design review with BPDA?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Case for nine-thirty, calling BOA eight-six-five-nine-zero-eight-five-twenty-two East Seventh Street. This is to combine lots to contain approximately nine-thousand-fifty-eight square feet and add twenty-seven residential surface parking spaces. The violation is Article sixty-eight, Section seven, the parking lot use is forbidden use in Article twenty-seventh, twenty-seven S, Section five. This is in the South Boston iPod applicability. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. My name is Joe Moranci, Attorney for Business, Address of three-fifty West Barrio, South Boston. Madam Chair, this is an application for twenty-seven vehicle parking lot. The address is five-twenty-two East Seventh Street. It's an unusually shaped lot that runs into the middle of the block. It would have access from the actual parcel, since the address is five-twenty-two East Seventh Street, and also by Solerno Place, which is a primary that runs from Seventh Street. First, over the record, there are two violations cited for the application, the forbidden use for surface parking lot and iPod, which are a violation, which finds a matter. iPod is not applicable. That's erroneously cited. iPod cannot be cited without a structure. We have proposed structure here, so the iPod application is actually erroneous. We have a single variance for the parking lot. Madam Chair, the address that concerns with the Solerno Place part of it is probably familiar to most members of the board who have heard of its case before the board and interpretation matter on Solerno Place some time ago. And I mention that because there's been a consensus in this neighborhood that this is not a site that people would like to see residentially developed in terms of building structures on the site.
So, Mr. Moranci, if I'm looking at this drawing, excluding these buildings on East Seventh Street, this is, in fact, a U-shaped lot?
Correct.
Essentially, a U-shaped lot.
Exactly. The lot essentially runs where the parking space is indicated. This is Solerno Place.
And Solerno Place is Solerno Place, okay?
Yes, that's right.
And who are these parking spaces anticipated for?
So this would be a residential parking lot, again, the board recollects in 2015. I was here for thirty-seven P Street, which is a very popular project, to take a large lot there and turn it into a residential parking condominium. There's another residential parking condominium in South Boston, corner of G and East Wood Street. This, in contrast to any proposed development project for this site, proposal to have a residential parking lot here for area residents has been met with great deal of support. The thinking is that these would be, again, condominium spaces, and these ones would be sold with the preference given to the immediate Butters and then the nearest neighbors in the neighborhood.
Thanks. Hold on, Mr. Moranci, hold on. How are the plans, Mr. Bezani?
Plans are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. My name is Faisal Sharif with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. On behalf of John Allison, we would like to go on record in support, provided that they continue to work with BPDA for design review.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Anna Calderon from Councilor Flynn's office. We would also like to go on record in support. There was an abutters meeting, and the direct up Butters were okay with this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Paul Sullivan, and we have City Council at Large, Michael Flaherty. Council going to record in support.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Madam Chair, good morning. Attorney Christopher Harrington, twenty-one McGrath Highway, Quincy, Massachusetts, oh-two-one-six-nine. I represent John and Arlene Evans, and James and Barbara Evans, who are the owners of the two-family of five-twenty-nine East Six-Three. They are direct up Butters to this property. I want to be very clear with you that we're here speaking not so much in opposition. We are neutral on this application at this time. My clients do have some concerns about the project, which we believe can be addressed in the final design plans that will be approved by BPDA and also the Boston Water and Sewer Commission. This property is presently an undeveloped lot. We're concerned about stormwater management and drainage on the site, also appropriate landscaping and fencing and lighting that does not illuminate the backyards and the bedrooms of all the people who live around this parking lot. We also have concerns about headlights from vehicles, noise from vehicles, noise from patrons, and a general loss of privacy when this development is built. However, we have had discussions with the developer and his attorney. We think that we can work all of these issues out, and so at this moment, our positions, we're neutral on this project pending the final design plans. Thank you.
Mr. Moranci? Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Hi.
Name and address for the record.
My name is Claire Aspen-Sullivan. I live at five-thirty-four East Seventh Street, and I'm here to express concerns about the accessibility of the parking lot. I'm not necessarily opposed or for it, but...
Sorry, you're at five-thirty-four East Seventh?
Correct.
Okay.
And what my concern is, is there's an existing driveway there that four to six cars use on a weekly basis. The... They're going to be engineering, I assume, a new driveway at the five-twenty-two address, is it? And I was hoping that they could also consider having all of their twenty-seven parkers go in and out of that driveway, as that driveway will be geared up for the traffic where the existing driveway on Solerno Place is an antique situation and going in and out of there... Sorry. The houses there have been dinged and banged up a little bit. So if it's at all possible, I'd like some consideration to the fact that majority of the in-and-out traffic would go to the five-twenty-two, which will be a larger driveway as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Enrico Lefrada. I'm the owner of five-twenty-four East Seventh Street, which is the other long property alongside five-twenty-two. And like Chris said, I'm right now neither for or against. I've had discussions with some of the attorneys as well, and I think, as Chris stated, we'll work together, and I think we will probably come to a solution.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lauren Ronwitch. I live at five-twenty-six East Seventh Street. I'm also a direct up Butter. Directly behind our house on the ground level, which is where our basement doors are, as soon as you walk outside, there's a probably about a four or five-foot retaining wall. It's pretty old. I'm a little bit concerned about the way that the cars are lined up there and the weight of those cars on that retaining wall. It has not been addressed so far, to me anyway, how they're going to remedy that situation. Are they going to level out the ground? Are they going to build a new retaining wall? And we're also... My neighbors and I are concerned about the lighting and the potential landscaping to kind of dim all of the traffic and the parking lights from going right into our bedrooms.
Do you own the retaining wall?
I'm not sure. It's been there. I've lived there. This is year fifteen... Sorry, year twelve that I've lived in that unit. It's been there since I've been there, and it's old and brick and kind of crumbling. So I'm sure it's been there.
Thank you.
A very long time. But also neither opposed or against, I just have concerns. I'd like to...
Mr. Moranci?
Thank you. We are aware of all of these concerns, as I think all of the speakers stated. We, Attorney Adams in my office, and I have been working with them, all the previous speakers, I think, already. We're confident that these issues can be worked out. Haven't gotten to engineering yet, obviously. The retaining wall issue, the all of the surface conditions, water runoff, will all be addressed, satisfaction of both Boston Water and Sewer Commission and the Special Services Department and the BPDA. That includes landscape screening and buffering and lighting, which will be low-down spotlighting, probably motion-activated, so that it's not creating any light pollution on the site.
Okay. If you may have a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion to grant relief request with the following proviso: that BPDA be heavily involved with the issues of screening and buffering, and also snow removal. I mean, the parking lot is very tight, and it's not obvious as to where the snow could be dumped. And I would request that you continue to work with the neighbors and resolve any outstanding issues. The issues that were expressed should be dealt with at the civil engineering level with construction documents, and I'm sure that will be...
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set for that proviso.
It's ten-thirty. I'm going to call any deferrals or withdrawals for the ten-thirty cases. No takers.
So we're going to take a ten-minute break. We will reconvene at ten-forty. Side of the room. Again, in conformance with the open meeting law, this meeting is being livestreamed. Please give us new information when you're at the podium, speaking either in support or in opposition to a project. We are here to fact-find, so the more information you give us, the better. Mr. Fortune?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to call the deferrals or withdrawals for ten-thirty. Hearing none? You get deferral? Sorry. Ted, what's the address?
Eleven Sagamore. Thirteen Sagamore.
Yep, thirteen Sagamore. For the record, calling BOA six-nine-three-three-eight-six thirteen Sagamore Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Edward Hearn, six Wenlock Road, Dorchester.
Can you tell us what's the reason for the request?
We're trying to work further out with the neighbor.
And this is for a single-family dwelling?
That's correct.
Okay. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to deferral.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please?
We have November thirteenth.
Thank you.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals? Hearing none, I'll call the first case for ten-thirty, BOA eight-three-one-six-three-eight-ninety, West Springfield Street. This is to replace an existing window with door and spiral stairs to the patio. The violation is Article sixty-four, Section nine. Porch balcony above the first floor in the rear yard shall be a conditional use. Name and address for the record, please.
I'm at West Springfield.
Down here.
Have a seat at the table, please.
You're down, Madam.
Tell us... Will you name and address for the record, please, and tell us what you're proposing?
Kimberly Kassanovich. I'm a friend of the residence and an attorney, just representing them. They were not able to be in town. They just had a baby, and they are... Want to put in a spiral staircase from their first floor outside down to the ground.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Bezani?
The drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. My name is Faisal Sharif with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. I'd like to go on record in support of this project. I did hold in a Butters meeting. There were no concerns from a Butters. Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion for approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling BOA... Calling BOA eight-five-seven-zero-seven-seven-seventy-seven, Ramsay Street. This is a renovation of an existing three-family building to include a new shed dormer and increase the living space. Violation is Article sixty-five, Section nine. The floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article sixty-five, Section nine, the required height is excessive. Three stories is the max. Article sixty-five, Section nine, the required height is excessive. Forty feet is the max. Article sixty-five, Section nine, the required side yard setback is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. My name is James Christopher Barcia. I'll see you with the business address of four-fifteen Napontide Ave, representing the owner, James Marcello, at seventy-seven Ramsay.
So tell us what's being proposed?
Currently, it's a three-family. The proposal is to add two shed dormers with an increase of about eight-hundred-and-ninety-seven square feet. The upper level will be a buy level, so the third and the upper half-story will be one unit owner occupied. The lower two levels, there's not much change. The footprint and setbacks do not change, so those violations pre-exist and are deploming. We met with the Butters. It was well received. They were happy to see the building renovated, and we met with the Clumby-Sad and Hill Civic group, who supported the project as well.
How many bedrooms will that upper unit have?
Three bedrooms. There'll be a master bedroom on the upper half-story with a sitting area and mechanical space.
And is there a deck being proposed?
The existing decks on the rail will be kept.
How are the plans, Mr. Bezani?
And drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Please, anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Patrick Vandel, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We're here to speak in support of this project. There was an Butters meeting held on June eighteenth with full support of the Butters. Thank you.
Morning, Madam Chair.
Trying to make up your mind there?
I'm sorry?
Trying to make up your mind there?
I am, my man. I just wanted to make sure I had the right one. Joe McGeckren, City Counselor, Frank Baker's office would like to go on record in support.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve with continued BPDA design review.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The back proviso.
Thank you, Peter.
Calling next ten cases, calling BOA eight-three-four-five-zero-five-seven-to-nine, Salon Street. There are nine other companion cases I'm going to call in for the record. BOA eight-three-four-five-four-one-four, Chamblit Street. BOA eight-three-four-five-three-seven-seven, Half Moon Street. BOA eight-three-four-five-six-three-eight, Woodford Street. BOA eight-three-four-five-three-nine-twenty-three, Magnolia Street. BOA eight-three-four-five-four-two-one-sixty-two, Magnolia Street. BOA eight-three-four-four-nine-three-one-sixty-four, Magnolia Street. BOA eight-three-four-five-zero-one-one-seventy, Magnolia Street. BOA eight-three-four-five-one-one-one-hundred, Magnolia Street. And BOA eight-three-four-five-zero-six-nine-eight-ninety-eight, Magnolia Street. I'm going to call the purpose, and the violations are very limited, so I will do it as fast as I can. For seven-to-nine Salon, it's erect a new two-family house on a vacant lot. The violation is Article fifty, Section twenty-nine. The rear yard is insufficient. For four Chamblit, do you guys want to handle it this way? We can go to each one after? Okay. For Chamblit, this is to erect a new one-family house on a vacant lot. The violation is Article fifty, Section twenty-nine. The lot area is insufficient. This is for seven Half Moon. Erect a new semi-attached one-family house on a vacant lot. This is violation is Article fifty, Section twenty-nine. The rear yard is insufficient. This is for eight Woodford. This is erect a new semi-attached one-family house. The violation is the same. Rear yard is insufficient. This is for twenty-three Magnolia. This is to erect a new two-family house on a vacant lot. The violation is Article fifty, Section twenty-nine. The lot area is insufficient. Article fifty, Section twenty-nine, the lot width is insufficient. Article fifty, Section twenty-nine, the lot frontage is insufficient. And Article fifty, Section twenty-nine, the side yard is insufficient. This is for one-sixty-two Magnolia. This is to erect a new semi-attached one-family house. The violation is Article fifty, Section twenty-nine. The rear yard is insufficient. This is for one-sixty-four Magnolia. This is to erect a new semi-attached one-family house. The violation is Article ten, Section one, limitation of area of accessory uses. And Article fifty, Section twenty-nine, the rear yard is insufficient. This is for one-seventy Magnolia. Erect a new one-family house. The violation is Article fifty, Section twenty-nine. The lot area is insufficient. Article fifty, Section twenty-nine, the lot width is insufficient. Article fifty, Section twenty-nine, the lot frontage is insufficient. And Article fifty, Section twenty-nine, the side yard is insufficient. This is for one-hundred Magnolia. This is erect a new two-family house. The violation is Article fifty, Section twenty-nine. The side yard is insufficient. This is for ninety-eight Magnolia. Erect a new two-family house on a vacant lot. The violation is Article fifty, Section twenty-nine. The side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Kendra Rowe. Address is fifty-eight Union Street, Brighton, Mass. zero-two-one-three-five.
What's being proposed?
This project... We answered to... Our team here answered to requests for proposals from the City of Boston NHI program with D and D oversight. We responded in June, and we were designated as the preferred developer for these projects in September. We submitted the programs, architectural designs, to ISD with the placement thereof, and we have come up with some variances that were needed to make sure that these homes that were already pre-approved by the city fit on these lots.
These are total of fourteen units. Looks like three of them are market rate.
There are twelve units. And four of them are market rate.
Okay. Okay, my math is off, or your summary is off, so, okay. And tell us about the average unit size and how many bedrooms? So it looks like you have a combination of two-bedroom... Are they mostly two bedrooms? Two and three bedrooms?
There's some two bedrooms. There are some three bedrooms, and there is one single-family house that is a four-bedroom.
A four-bedroom. And is that market?
That is a hundred percent AMI.
Oh, good. Okay. Okay. I'm particularly interested in the two projects that have the largest number of violations, because the others are understandable. That is one seventy and twenty-three, Magnolia Street?
So three of those violations are based in a lot having an existing non-conformity prior to the placement of the house. The sideyard depth, our engineer used the formula for the lot to, Chris, do you wanna elaborate on the formula that was used for the side lot?
For?
It's twenty-three, Magnolia. So there's a formula where there's a narrow lot, and so when Chris did the math, we should come in.
Chris Kirby, the engineer that put the plans together. On twenty, there is one sideyard violation of, we're at five point one feet. We have a narrow lot, so we can reduce the sideyard requirement to seven point, seven four feet, and we're at five point one feet on one side.
Okay. And one seventy? Because that looks like it's also a small lot.
It is, that's an existing lot.
Yeah.
If that was an existing lot, it was.
And tell us, tell us generally what the square footage is of the one, the twos and the threes?
So the square foot?
The twos and threes?
Yep.
Two families and three families?
Yep, how many square feet?
Three bedrooms, you mean? The two-family, George Banks, KNG. Two families are twenty-four hundred. That's gross square footage. That's for two bedrooms. For three bedrooms, we're at thirty-two hundred and fifty square feet.
Thirty-two fifty square feet for three bedrooms? Okay. And who's the architect of the bracket? Is there an architect of bracket?
It'll be Jay Lee from the D and D, no?
No, no, I, I've got the plans together.
So I do have a question, obviously, as the architect of the board. Why wasn't an architect employed on this project? Fourteen units, and I understand that engineers can do single families, but I'm not, I wasn't aware that you could move into one, two families and threes.
Plans were provided for us, we were given, we were basically, we were given all the plans from the D and D. They were all candid projects. We didn't pick the design, we didn't pick the asylum house, that was all given to us. And that's why we ran with those plans, we didn't change it, we didn't have the ability to change it.
Right, right, and I understand that, but the question comes about, is that when you impose a standardized design, is it always compatible with the particular neighborhood that it is now going into? And one of the reasons that we asked for BPDA design review is to ensure contextuality. That's one of the reasons that, well, it's one of the reasons that prefabs have had a difficult time simply because of their unwillingness to change their standard design to accommodate.
So this is a?
That's my editorial.
So this is anticipated to be prefab?
No.
No.
So, so who came up with the design?
The designs were given to us from the D and D, so they were.
Is somebody here from D and D? Please, Dave, can you put your name, address on the record and just give us a brief background? Who's, who designed the original prototype?
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is David Cottar, today testifying on behalf of the Department of Neighborhood Development. So this, the NHI program we have is, is what we basically do, is we take vacant city-owned lots, RFP them out for development for affordable housing. And we have design guidelines where we essentially have templates of houses pre-approved by the BPDA that we make minor tweaks to, to fit the lot and to, to fit the various neighborhoods. But these are all designs that D and D has come up with through our staff architects and have, you know, made minor changes to fit the various sites in the neighborhoods.
So this, these, these designs were D and D staffed, or was it contracted out to come up with the design?
D and D has staff architects who do it.
Can I ask you a couple of questions, please? I'm sitting here just amazed. So, and I'm a resident of this neighborhood, and, and so as a resident, when would we have had an opportunity to see any of these designs or have any input?
We had a couple of meetings with, that were hosted by DSNI that we invited the community to. I, was it two meetings? Two meetings, one of them was about a month ago, and then the first one was back when we first started this, roughly eight months or a year ago, I would guess.
And I'll just add, there was a meeting in the community center at Dudley Neighborhood Initiative as early as June of two thousand sixteen, because that was when we originally started, when, when our team got together to start putting the design work together.
And was the design brought back to the community after?
Yes.
So, so basically you were working through DSNI, it's, you were basically working through DSNI then?
Yeah, so just given that there are so many scattered sites, we, we sort of use them as, as, as an organization that represented the, the greater neighborhood and allowed us to have centralized meetings.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, just, he said four of the twelve units are market, the other eight are, did he describe the four of them, the other eight?
Sure, so the complexion of the eight units, some of them are two families, some of them are the singles, and some of them will be sold at eighty percent AMI, and some will be sold at a hundred percent AMI.
And are they deed restricted to?
Yes, and the Dudley Neighborhood Initiative, who is our partner, they will be the stewards of the ground lease, that'll be for ninety-nine years. There'll be a program that those properties will be entered into to secure and ensure the affordability for a very long time. And also, the market units will also be deed restricted, that they will be owner occupied for fifteen years.
And if I heard correctly, all parking was being accommodated, so that we're not gonna see issues popping up?
Correct.
Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal? Hold on one second. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Joshua McFadden, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, would like to go on record in support.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Saint Admahn from Councilor Kim Dini's office, we would also like to go on record in support.
Thank you.
Madam Chair and the board, my name is Tony Hernandez, I serve as Director for Dudley Neighbors Incorporated, the Community Land Trust, and a number of these units, when they are built, will become a part of our land trust portfolio and will strike a ninety-nine year ground lease with the owners that end up in these homes to preserve the affordability in perpetuity for the lifetime of the, of the house.
Thank you.
So I come here in support of the project.
Thanks.
Good morning, Christine O'Keefe from the City of Boston Department of Neighborhood Development. As the person who conducted the community process, I just wanted to say that working with Dudley Street Neighborhood, Inc., we met with the community on numerous occasions. We actually identified several city-owned parcels on Magnolia, Clifton, Woodward. We went from Dudley always up to, I can't think of the street, Quincy Street, and we looked at all of the city-owned parcels along that site. And we literally went and said, what type of house, what style a house fits on each one? Not only did we get housing on, out of the project, but we also got a farm and a community garden as well. So we did have an extensive community process, and we did tweak the designs to make sure that they fit exactly what the community wanted to see in that neighborhood.
The farm is the food project?
No, the farm has been, it's been stalled a little bit, it's not the food project, it's at the corner of Salon and, it's at Salon and Magnolia. It's actually on hold at the moment, unfortunately, the farm that we had selected is not moving forward at the moment, so we're looking at reissuing an RFP for that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
I'm gonna make a motion to approve with continued BPDA design review.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries, you're all set.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, for the record, Marie has abstained.
Calling the next case, calling BOA eight five seven zero seven zero, twelve, Dabbitt Street. This is to construct a new rear third-story addition to create additional living space and no change of the existing occupancy. Violation is Article sixty-five, Section nine, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article sixty-five, Section nine, the height is excessive, two and a half stories is maximum allowed. Article sixty-five, Section nine, the sideyard setback is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is James Christopher of R.C.A.L.C.U., with Project Architects. The business address is four fifteen Napontsada, representing the owner, Vincent Baker. The proposal is to construct a new rear addition with an increase of above three hundred and seventy square feet, it does create a third story. Currently, two and a half. We had a butters meeting on-site, which none of the names attended, and we went to the Savin Hill Civic Association, which the project was meant to support.
What were the violations again?
It's.
FAR, height.
FAR, correct.
Sideyard is just sideyard, okay? And how large does that top unit become with the subdivision?
It's, it's an increase of about three hundred and seventy square feet, so it goes from sixteen hundred and eighty-nine square feet to nineteen hundred and fifty-three square feet.
And how many bedrooms?
Goes from two to three.
Two to three. How are the plans, Mr. Bizani?
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Patrick Vandel, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, there was a butters meeting held on June eighteenth, and also was presented to the Columbia Savin Hill Civic Association with full support of both bodies. Thank you, we're going on record in support.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve. Use BPDA design review.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries, the back proviso.
Calling the next four cases, calling BOA eight three one six four seven, ten to twelve, Ashton Street. BOA eight five two seven four two, forty-nine, Stratton Street. BOA eight three one six four six, one oh eight to one ten, Lusserne Street. And BOA eight three one six four eight, one thirty-three to one thirty-five, Calendar Street. This is for ten to twelve, Ashton. This is erect a new two-family residential dwelling, propose two off-street parking. Violation is Article sixty, Section nine, the lot area is insufficient. Article sixty, Section nine, the front yard is insufficient. This is for forty-nine, Stratton. This is erect a new three-story, single-family dwelling on an existing four thousand eight hundred and sixty-three square foot lot, and this is part of the Neighborhood Homes Initiative Program. The violation is Article sixty, Section nine, lot area is insufficient. This is for one oh eight to one ten, Lusserne Street. This is erect a new two-family residential dwelling, propose two off-street parking. Violation is Article sixty, Section nine, lot area is insufficient. Article sixty, lot frontage is insufficient. Article sixty, lot width is insufficient. And Article sixty, Section nine, front yard is insufficient. The last one, this is for one thirty-three to one thirty-five, Calendar Street. Erect a new two-family residential dwelling, propose two off-street parking. Violation is Article ten, Section one, off-street parking located less than five feet from the side lot line. Article sixty, Section forty, off-street parking maneuvering, area is insufficient. Article sixty, Section nine, the lot area is insufficient. Article sixty, Section nine, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article sixty, front yard is insufficient. Article sixty, side yard is insufficient. And Article sixty, Section nine, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Rashmi Ramaswamy with Rhodey Architects. My address is one thirteen Hampshire Street, Cambridge, Mass. zero two one three nine.
So tell us what's being proposed?
So this is another one of those NHI projects that, like the preceding one, and so, so we have four lots here, as was called out, and there are minor variance, minor setback and lot area non-conformances that we're seeking variants of.
So this is a total of seven units?
It's four buildings and there are three, two families and one single family, so yes, seven units.
Okay. The one that seems to have triggered the, the highest number of violations is Calendar Street?
Yeah.
Can you please speak to that?
Yeah, so if you look at the site plan, that's a very tight lot. So we're. So this has a two-family, it's a narrow lot, and most of, most of the items requiring variances are because the lot is small. So first of all, the lot itself is only thirty-eight oh four square feet. And so when you put a building on that lot, the FAR is exceeded. We also have trouble with the landscape buffer because the lot is narrow, so I'm not able to have a five-foot landscape buffer. Similarly, the front yard is insufficient, because the lot is not deep enough.
And also tell us about the off-street parking?
Yeah, so we have, the, it's gonna be tandem parking along the driveway, so you can look to the west of the building itself, and there's gonna be a, the two cars will have to park there in tandem. So some of this was negotiated with D and D, and it's also gone through BPDA approval and a butters meetings and so on, so because this was a small lot, we had to kind of go a couple of rounds with D and D.
My only thought was, I wondered if that should have been a single-family, you know, just given that the other lot is, is larger. But, but also, let's see, tell us the bedroom count? Are these two bedrooms, three bedrooms?
Yeah, so this one has a first-floor rental unit, which is two-bedroom, one bathroom, second-floor owner unit, two-bedroom, one bathroom, and then in our FAR calculation, we've included the third floor for, you know, future bedroom for the attic.
And what's the average square feet of your two bedrooms?
So it's about fifteen hundred, and if you add the attic space, then the second floor becomes twenty-four hundred, approximately.
And are these all two bedrooms?
So the, three of them are two bedrooms, and then we have the single-family that's at forty-nine Stratton, that's a three-bedroom, one bathroom.
Okay, and what's the square footage of that?
That one is seventeen sixty-five, including the attic.
How are the plans, Mr. Bizani?
I'm sorry?
No. The drawings are excellent.
Thank you.
They're done by Rhodey.
Yes.
So that raises the question, because this is part of the initiative. Why did you choose to use an architect rather than try to do it another way?
So I'm with Rhodey, so first of all, thank you. The, the developer's flight is delayed because of the storm, and the expediter is having a baby, so I'm here representing everybody. The developer had a prior relationship with Rhodey, and we've, you know, worked with them before, so they thought it was better to, you know, go with us rather than try to do it on their own.
But, and this is the D and D again, right?
It is a D and D project, you know, there, the lots are all really awkward, so it has been beneficial for us to, you know, be involved and make sure that.
They didn't feel that their template, their boilerplate, their design could work?
I don't wanna sleep for D and D.
No, it's not fair to ask you to sleep for D and D.
I mean, it's, it's been a helpful experience, you know, because we come from, you know, having built a lot of these buildings, so there's a lot of suggestions that we've made along the line that just sort of improve the design, it's sort of in every.
So there's a continual improvement?
Yeah.
Rather than a restamping? You know, I think that's the point that we were trying to get to earlier, and that benefits everybody.
I mean, for example, like the window layout in the, in the bedrooms sometimes is a little excessive, you can't furnish it, so we've been in conversation every week at the construction meeting, so, you know, we've been open with limitations to our suggestions, so, yeah.
Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Faisal Sharif with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to go on record in support, thank you.
Morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Joe Backer, and I'm a development officer with the Department of Neighborhood Development, and we're in support of this project. The, all of the parcels are city parcels, and the affordable units are utilizing city funds as well. Thank you.
Can you speak to the question about why the project is made in this situation, using an architect with folks in the neighborhood?
I think as was sort of discussed with the last package, the template drawings are often adapted in certain ways to fit the context of the neighborhood or the parcels themselves, so we were very happy to work with Rhodey on changing them where, where it made sense.
But, but you did come to the.
I'm sorry, I can't.
The D and D did not do, chose not to do that on the previous.
Any other neighborhood?
I think it, with the NHI project, it really varies from site to site.
Okay, so, so just, I think the rest of your team has left. So please, I think the message that, that should be conveyed to the rest of the team is that, oh, are you gonna put your name and address on the record? Yes, this is the Ashton Street Projects, Stratton, et cetera? Because this is also a D and D project, so please.
Christine O'Keefe from the City of Boston's Department of Neighborhood Development.
I think you missed the part of our conversation a little bit earlier about the, the sense from us is that it's, it can be very useful to have an architect onboard to retweak and relook at the projects and look at the boilerplates, so that they're more responsive to neighborhood form and neighborhood needs. So we just wanna put that out there as other projects make their way through the pipeline.
Perfect, thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion for approval with BPDA design review for all four projects.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Respecting the neighborhood.
And is anybody here, is, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Calling BOA 736-215-93-KINGSTREET. This is to install back decking for second floor with the same size of an existing first floor, 18 by 8 foot 4. Violations, Article 9, Section 1, the proposed deck addition is an extension of an extension of non-conforming use. Article 65, Section 9, insufficient side yard setback. And Article 65, Section 9, insufficient rear yard setback. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Peggy Cross, 93 Queen Street, Dr. Maturo, 2122.
Thank you. Would you like to explain briefly what's being proposed? Are you, are you going to help us interpret?
Yes.
Okay, so please tell us what's being proposed.
She extended the deck, the second floor deck, the same size as the first floor. The size is 18 by 8.
How are the plans, Mr. Bizani?
Drawings are adequate. It's an eight and a half foot by 18 foot deck.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Patrick Vandell, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We're here to speak in full support of this project.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Joe McGaughan, City Councilman, Baker's office, we'd like to go on record in support.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Calling BOA 16890, 96 Milton Avenue. This is a change of occupancy to a three-family, enclosed the exterior porches. The violation's Article 9, Section 1, extension of a non-conforming use. And Article 65, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Name and address for the record, please.
Harold Raymond, 998 Metropolitan F, Milton. Could you hand those out?
Has this project been before us before?
I don't think so.
No?
No.
So tell us, is this also to change the legal occupancy to a three-family? What is the goal of this?
The goal of this is to clean up what the previous owner who owned this property. One is, it's a three-family building in a 2F,000 family area, so that triggers the variance number one. The other problem is the previous owner, this used to be outdoor porches, the previous owner enclosed it up. Mr. Sanders brought the property two years ago. And it's a, it's a large building. We have about four bedrooms on each one of the floors. We also have a potential, the buyer is going to be Family Aid, which is going to put family housing. So, you know, large family with four-bedroom units. I can walk through the plans.
So, hold on. Okay, so let's backtrack. So is the occupancy clear or are you here to clarify the?
To clarify the occupancy as a three-family.
As a three-family. Has taxes been paid on this as a three-family and everything? Okay, and now this is, and tell us about enclosing the porches, porches. What are the, what are the sizes?
The sizes of the porch is about, it's about eight by 10. And the previous owner just enclosed them.
Is the.
And he didn't pull the building permits, so ISD wants to clean this up.
Is the second means of egress still maintained within the enclosed porches?
Yeah, you have two ways of egress inside the building.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Bizani?
Drawings are adequate.
Is there any use in the basement?
No.
No?
Just the mechanical.
Are there any questions from the board?
I have a question. Family Inc. is going to buy the building or Family Inc. is going to occupy the building?
They're going to buy the building, put family housing inside. And it's, you know, there's a desperate need for family housing here in Boston.
Family Inc., to my knowledge, is an organization that takes temporary housing and, and, you know, they put people in temporary housing from subsidized, you know, subsidized certificates and stuff.
So this is.
Waiting on subsidized housing.
So. Can you, can you explain the transitional housing, people coming from shelters? How, how, how does Family Inc. work?
Family Aid, it's Family Aid.
Oh, of course, Family Aid, okay, I misheard, okay. So Family Aid will be occupying this?
Yeah.
Will they occupying or purchasing this?
Purchasing, we have a purchase and sell agreement.
Okay. And why aren't they here? Is there a representative from their, from that organization here?
Well, I have to straighten it out before I sell the building to them.
I see. Okay, so the plans are adequate. Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal? Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Whitney Celestin with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. I've held an abutters meeting for this project. I've also put them through the Dun Association Neighborhood Meeting. We oppose this project. While the home was purchased with the porches closed, the community strongly prefers the porches be open to keep the character of the neighborhood with a triple-decker feel. Thus, we oppose this project. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Dustin Gardner, on behalf of Council President Andrea Campbell's office. We'd like to go on record in opposition of this. To add to what the mayor's office said, we believe that the home has been used for an illegal boarding house. And in opposition to what they said, Family Inc. actually backed out of buying this property because of other issues that they saw with the building. So we'd like to go on record in opposition.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Megan Kamel from Councilor Asavi George's office. We'd like to echo what was said before and we are in opposition to this project. Thank you.
My name is Jessica Stevens. I am a resident, a resident of the community. I am opposed to egress, 28 Selden Street. I live right around the corner from it. I oppose it, oppose to that there are also other illegal issues going on at that building. And like they said, the previous owner did back out of buying the property because of the other issues that was also going on at that property.
So he's, the owner is proposing to clean up the issues, but just, you're still opposed to?
Yes, because that's not, that's not the real.
That's not the character. Okay, okay.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Javon Lassette. I'm a member of Dun. I live in 30 City Street, Mattapan. But I attend 90% of Dun's meeting and well affiliated with, well knowledgeable about this project here. At the meetings, the present owner really hasn't been clear about what's going on with this project. It's my understanding they were trying to clean it up to sell. As an attorney, we spoke, I spoke to the attorney, we had other attorneys there. If they were really just trying to sell the, clean it to sell the project, in today's market, they can sell the project as is.
So let me just back up. So as far as I can understand, that your opposition is based on lack of clarity of what's going to happen to the building? How about anything else related to the request for zoning relief?
Well, well, in terms of supporting the neighbors, they do want to open porch like the city already stated.
And, and you're, and are you a resident of the neighborhood?
I am a boarded-on resident. I'm on Cedar Street in Mattapan.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I am a stakeholder. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Dawn Barrett and I reside at 73 Stockton Street. The rear of 96 Milton Ave butts my driveway. I have three little boys and I have tenants on the first floor. We strongly oppose Calvin Sanders legalizing enclosed porches. We want it opened up. As a community and also as a president of our Neighborhood Association, Georgetown Unified Neighborhood Association, we strongly oppose him doing this. Calvin Sanders has.
Hold on, hold on. I want to keep it purely to this proposal in front of us. So, so basically your concern is about the, the, the closing of the porches. You'd rather have.
We want it opened up. There is no other triple-decker in our community that is enclosed, that has enclosed porches. And he's also, if you look at the building plan, he wants to add additional bedrooms. His initial goal was to turn this unit into a 24.
All I want to know is what's in front of us?
I'm sorry.
You know, because that's all we can rule on. So, so before us, so, so there, there's addition, adding of bedrooms?
Yes, in his building plans, it states that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chairman and Board. I'm, my name is Barbara Krichlow and I live at 140 West Selden Street. And I am representing the West Selden Street and Vicinity Neighborhood Association. And we are definitely in opposition to this project. There's just too many variables and the understanding is, has not been clear.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Given that information, any response? Quick response, yes.
She's right. I did go bef, I, I did put it, put in a request to make the family, I mean, make the property a legal rooming house.
But, but I, all I, all I want to know is what's before us today? I don't want to know about everything else.
I wasn't trying to add rooms or anything like that. I was just trying to, you know, make it legal as a rooming house. I decided not to do that and that's why this got sparked. Because those porches were like that for the last 20 years, so.
So it sounds to me like you guys need to do some work with the community. So may I have a motion, please?
Motion for denial.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We'd be happy to entertain this again, but do some work with the community and with the denial means you can't come in with exactly this proposal, but you can come in with something else. Okay?
So we can come back.
Yes, but, but honestly, it sounds like there needs to be some good, good communication going on. Okay, and Harold, you know that.
Yep.
Okay?
Calling the next three projects, BOA 837-788-4623, Washington Street. Is Washington Street here? BOA 837-788, I'm sorry. BOA 837-793-4625, Washington Street. And BOA 837-789-4627, Washington Street. The purpose and the violations are all the same, so I'm just going to read it off once for all three properties. This is construction of three-unit residential structure, each unit to consist of three bedrooms, two baths, a kitchen and living room, and front porch. Underlying lots to be combined, the parking to be provided via 28-unit auxiliary parking lot. The violation's Article 67, Section 33, more than one building on the same lot. Article 67, Section 8, multifamily is forbidden in a 2F, 5,000 sub-district. Article 67, Section 9, lot area is insufficient. Article 67, lot width is insufficient. Article 67, floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 67, building height is excessive in stories. Article 67, usable open space is insufficient. Article 67, front yard is insufficient. Article 67, Section 9, side yard is insufficient. Article 67, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning. My name is John Lyden. This is my wife, Anne Lyden, and we live at Five Caspian Way with the proponents. And this is my.
Tell us what's being proposed.
So this project, Madam Chairman, is in regards to three, three-family structures located on Washington Street in Rosendale. I don't know if you have the, there's an existing three-family that is not part of what we're discussing, that has not to do with me.
And this is right across from the Burger King?
Correct. It's currently a vacant parcel of land. So each, each unit will be three bedrooms, living room, kitchen, and they'll all be sold as condos. They're designed to be, when the project's completed, my goal, our goal was to have the, the, the look and feel as if it had all, it had always been there. It's designed to fit comprehensively in with the neighborhood. We've been working on this with, with the neighbors since February of 2017. Had about, almost, I think, seven or eight informal neighborhood process, neighborhood meetings in conjunction with Councilor McCarthy's office and under their guidance. We also did our neighborhood, our official abutters meeting, of course. And I believe we have, we, well, we have near unanimous support from the neighbors.
Tim, can you go through these violations? So this is a 2F district.
Yep.
And you're proposing a street, I, I don't have any plans in front of me, but it looks like these the equivalent in triple-decker style. Tell us about the size of the units proposed.
Well, basically, as, as John said, they're three-bedroom units, they're good standard-sized units. And they vary from 12, from 1255 square feet for the first floor to 1325 for the second floor. And then, you know, the upper floor's a little bigger, it's 1460. But they're being real good-sized, good three-bedrooms, two-bath condominiums. We have, the way the site works, there's a lot of ledge there, I think it's why it was have it built on.
There's a lot of ledge.
You see the stones sticking out?
Did you look at the building jacket on this? Because there was another appeal on this many years ago.
This is a long time, yeah.
Yeah.
17 years, I think.
Yeah.
I know the people involved with it, but.
What was the original proposal for?
The original proposal was for, the original proposal was for 15 units. And it was pared down in the course of, you know, discussions amongst this board and, and the neighbors to, I believe it was 14 units. Subsequently, the neighbors brought suit and it was vacant since. It's been sitting vacant since then.
I just, my opinion was it was just two big buildings and I don't think it fit the neighborhood. It wasn't involved.
But now, okay, so let's just, the part I'm, I'm interested in is, this is very similar to the one in Charlestown. What does auxiliary parking mean?
Basically, parking is on, there are different parcels, right?
Well, we've combined the parcels.
So you're proposing to combine parcels?
And we're going to provide 28 parking spaces, because that was a major concern of the neighbors. There should be zero parking impact by this project on your budding public ways. That's our goal.
Okay, so tell us how this is all going to work? Do you have a, explain to us, Tim, how, so how, how is, what is going to be the access to the parking lot?
To the left of the parcel is Shubert Street, and we're going to have an entry on that side. So when you look at the parcel, there's a street on either side.
Looking at Washington, at it from Washington Street.
On the left side, the upper side. There's Shubert Street, it's a little private way. And currently now, I mean, you can just drive right onto the lot. And so we're going to turn that into a parking area behind these buildings, just access from that one point.
And how did the abutters get screened and buffered against that parking?
I'm sure you answered the question. I've shown seven feet of buffered area between that and then.
Okay. Okay, and so this is straight off of Shubert, okay? And so this is also, this does not include parcel 663 and 672?
Oh, no, that's right.
It does not include parcel 659 with the existing three-family. That is not my part, that is not my property.
Okay.
That has nothing to do with us.
But I see parcel 672 and parcel 663. Are those yours?
Well, behind the building, no. I found the 671 and 664.
You have to rec, Madam Chairman, those are ours and they are part of the combined.
72 and 663 are yours?
Yes.
Okay, so you're basically combining five parcels?
For 20,000 square feet.
Okay, okay. And how many of these units will be accessible, handicapped accessible?
Three.
Three, all the ground floor units? Anything, anything proposed to the basement?
No.
We just, it's because of the stone, we just slab on, because of the HBN, because of the stone, we just slab on grade, we know basement.
Okay, any roof decks?
No.
No roof decks.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Bizani?
Drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Send you.
Yeah, just, I, you met, I don't have a, 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 you know, it's like, you said it's largely ledge?
It's ledge, ledge sticks up, probably four and a half, five feet from the sidewalk.
For the entire lot?
From what we can see, it looks like, it looks like it's sort of the top of the drum, maybe.
The front area along Washington Street is entirely exposed ledge, goes up to about four, maybe five feet in height.
And how, how deep into the lot?
I would say it covers about 70% of the lot. It's large outcropping the ledge, which is frankly why we're seeking a variance at all.
Yeah, but you can just slab on grade, so you don't have to. That's a lot, that's a lot of ledge removal, right?
I'm sorry?
It's a lot of ledge removal.
It is, it's, well, it's, it's less without the basement, at least it's slab on grade, running on four feet. But it's still a lot. I think it's why it probably has it built on.
Do you know what you're going, what method you're going to use to remove the ledge?
Not yet.
Probably jackhammer.
Probably jackhammer.
It won't be plastic.
Sure, the neighbors will be.
Yeah, I'm sure.
It's going to be painful, but when it's done, the idea is there'll be nine owner-occupied homes of an affordable $500,000 to $600,000 range in the city of Boston.
With, with all that blasted, with all that cleaning up?
Correct. Correct.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
Drive.
Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Joe Carpenter, representing the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, and we would like to go on record in support of this project.
Thank you. Tell, can you, Joe?
Yes.
Can you tell us briefly about the community process that was involved?
I can tell you a little bit. Honestly, I inherited this case from the last liaison. I know that John Lyden did a pretty good job of building a relationship with the community from the last time this project was presented.
Thank you. Walter?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Walter Applewhite. On behalf of Counselor McCarthy's office, we'd like to go on record in support. Our Chief of Staff, Lee Blazi, was very involved in the community process. He said that they satisfied the concerns of the neighbors who've been sort of overseeing this for like 20 years, and that he met their needs and they're more than satisfied with it, so we'd like to support the project.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Megan Camella from Counselor Savvy George's office, we'd like to go on record in support and echo everyone else that's already said.
Thank you. Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Madam Chairman and members of the board, my name is Stuart Schreier. I'm an attorney with an office at 1005 Dorchester Avenue in Dorchester. I represent West Parkway LLC, which owns a property at 11 Shubert Street. The problem here is, my client doesn't so much oppose the project. Three, three-deckers are not really excessive. Yeah, it's a 2F zone, I mean, it's going to be four, six units, or it's going to be nine units, that's not the problem for my client. The problem is, List Street is a 40-foot-wide public way. There is already a driveway on List Street. Shubert Street is a 25-foot-wide private way. I've checked all of that with the street guide that the city no longer publishes, but it's absolutely a private way. And the problem you have is only lot 4627, that is the only lot that has any right to use the private way. It's an appurtenant right. And you cannot overload a private way, and you cannot add land and then say, we consolidated the lots, and then these lots can also use Shubert Street. So you have legal issues. One, overloading the, overloading the private way. Two, an overly intensive use. 28 parking spaces, at least 56 trips in and out. My client has a solution for that. More than willing to not oppose this project if they entered off of List Street, so half the traffic would come in off of List Street and half the traffic would exit off of Shubert Street. The problem is, there were three driveways here for this land. There was an existing curb cut, according to the plans on Washington Street. There was a curb cut on List Street and a curb cut on Shubert. They want to close the two curb cuts and dump all of this traffic onto the private way. It's an unreasonable solution, and in fact, it violates the law. It's an overloading, an overly intensive use of a private way, and my client opposes for that reason alone. The project itself looks nice. The buildings are acceptable, the scale of the projects is reasonable. It's not that he's just here saying, no, 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 but he wants a solution for the driveway issues. Even the parking's not opposed. 28 parking spots.
Thank you. Anybody else in opposition? Did I see you stand up?
Yeah.
He represented you?
Yes.
Okay, so response, please.
So I sympathize with the opponent in his complaint.
You've probably heard this before.
Yes and no. Over the course of this community engagement, we never heard from West Parkway LLC until the last, very last meeting, when most of these plans were finalized. Had they been involved earlier, and maybe that's my fault, I don't know.
But, so tell us about the question about the usage of List Street.
So in, in my attempts to satisfy the abudders in the surrounding neighborhood, I agreed to close the existing curb cuts there specifically to divert parking away from List Street. Nine units creates additional traffic and they didn't want that, so I agreed to that. And it was, it was particularly easy to agree to that because there was no, there was no, there was nothing telling me.
So, and so it's, there's no technical reason, like a huge outcropping, that's stopping you from using List Street?
The reason we put it on Shubert Street is because it's flat, from that side, the hill's dropping.
Yeah.
It's a little hard to do unless you're, you know, you probably have to, you're going from 236 to 2, so you're going up four feet, you know, so you have a ramp. Just a little bit easier on the left side.
And I don't remember, is List two ways or one way?
List, thanks.
It's two ways.
It's two ways.
It's two ways.
Shubert's one.
Is it one?
Yeah. Shubert, I know, I know Shubert, yes. It ends into the, into the park.
Shubert serves only parcel 664 with West Parkway LLC, they have 12 units, and then also a six-unit, which is located across the street from Michael O's Development.
Yep.
List serves, serves the entire community.
Okay, so, okay, so that's going to be something you're going to need to address. Okay?
Does the existing three-decker on the corner of Washington List have any parking?
Actually, there will be parking provided, right?
But I mean, now, as of now?
As of now, they park on the vacant lot. It's, it's, it's a free-for-all, in essence.
Okay, so may I have a motion, please?
Can I ask one question? You're the same John Lyden that's also suing us on another project?
That's correct. I'm not, I'm not suing you or anything, I'm suing the board.
No, 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 but, but-
Are you suing the board, then?
Yes, you're suing, you're suing the board.
I have no choice to buy lots to the board, I have no complaint with this board. If I could, if you'd like to discuss that issue, I can.
No, I, I, I just recalled the name, that's all.
Yeah, that's a little surprising to us, but, but, okay.
We don't usually, we don't usually get people playing both sides.
That project that you're referencing will result in the creation of a new street behind my backyard.
I think, I think I remember that project, actually, I do remember that project.
Yeah, that's my only complaint.
So let me just focus on this neck of the woods. So we have all this information, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve with BPD design review.
Do you mind adding it that we need resolution on the parking?
Absolutely.
And that we are welcome to look at it, bring it back as board final arbiter, once the parking situation has been resolved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yeah, I'm opposed.
Motion carries. You're going to get more of that if you continue the do list, I'm just kidding.
Calling the next two cases, calling BOA 847-012-214-Lincoln Street. Companion case, BOA 847-013-226-Lincoln Street. This is for 214 Lincoln. This is renovations to an existing five-story building for the Church of Scientology. Renovations to include offices, below-grade parking, adult education, reception, public information cafe, and small gym. The violation is Article 11, Section 1. Sign-in residential districts, 5155, sign regulations applicable to residential districts. Article 51, Section 56, off-street parking is insufficient. Article 51, Section 56, 51-56.5, off-street parking design. This is for 226 Lincoln Street. This is renovations to the Church of Scientology, one-story building to include new offices, auditorium, childcare, classroom, warming kitchen. Violates Article 11, Section 1, 51-55, sign regulations applicable to residential districts. Article 51, Section 56, off-street parking. And Article 51, Section 56, 51-56.5, off-street parking design. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chairman, members of the board, my name is Mike McCarthy, attorney with the office of, on the Cambridge Street, my right, it's my attorney, Dave Suey, with the presentation, as was just mentioned. We are looking for, to move from off-street parking and from signage. We have, we've had ongoing discussions with BPDA and, just so that you know, we expect we'll continue to have ongoing discussions. Would that, Dave?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Just a brief project overview. You can see the aerial photo here, this is 214 Lincoln Street and 226 Lincoln Street. It's on the northeast corner of the interchange between the Everett Street overpass and the Mass Pike.
Is this the one that was developed that stayed vacant for all those years?
No. No, this was, no, that's on the northwest corner. That former Harvard building. This is the other building, this is formerly owned by Philip de Normandy. It was, it was, and still is, to a limited extent, an office building, a five-story office building, and then there are a couple of small warehouse buildings. Four lots altogether comprise the project. Two lots are at issue for the variances. So the site was selected because it's a good location, close to the Mass Pike. Most of the traffic to the church can come in off the Lincoln Street without creating any traffic or overcrowding issues. There's a lot of parking on-site, although we don't quite meet the zoning code requirement, so we're seeking a variance as to number of off-street parking spaces, as well as ISD flagged, the design of the parking. The spaces are slightly smaller than standard, but we believe there will be ample parking and are not concerned in the extent that we need to park off-site, we'll just park off-site. There won't be any parking in the neighborhood.
So just, so just backtrack. So tell us exactly what you're proposing to do. This is, tell us exactly what you're proposing to do.
Sure, the church has acquired these properties and they are proposing to essentially do interior renovations to the office building and interior renovations to one of the warehouse buildings, and the other warehouse building is going to be demolished, and there's going to be a courtyard, outdoor area for seating. So there's no changes to any footprints of any of the buildings, no increase in FAR, it's actually being, being reduced. And it's going to be a single user, it's going to be the Church of Scientology's New England headquarters.
And what is the use specifically?
The use is a church use, essentially. This is a residential neighborhood where the church use is as of right, under the zoning code.
Church, church as a house of worship is as of right?
Yes.
So this will be a house of worship?
Yes, there will be a house of worship on the site, along with accessory uses, including administrative offices, and educational center, and basically some counseling areas. And it's, those are sort of core parts of the church's religion.
And so how are you going to address, I know you started to talk about this, but how are you going to address the parking? What is the parking requirement? Because I'm assuming that's triggered by the other uses that, that you're proposing in the building?
Yes, so the total number of spots required is actually going down, because it's going from an office, which has a 2.0 ratio purely, to a mixed use, which has less requirements. So there are 111 spots are being provided, and also in the materials that we've submitted, we have an ability to utilize a valet company to stack parking on the site, and we can get an additional 41 spots on-site. So we can have up to 152 spots on-site.
Okay.
This shows the stacked parking plan as here.
So you're going to provide, and what are, what are you anticipating your peak time of use is?
So the, the church will use the property between roughly the hours of 8:00 AM and 10:00 PM, and they have two shifts that come in and out, where the services are provided, the counseling and the education. And then there is a weekend, one weekend service. There's only about, currently about 90 members in the church in the New England area that attend. Peak time really will be the occasional special event, where if they were to have a special event, you might bring in more than the 80 people or so. And in those cases, because it's a single user, they will carefully coordinate who's getting there, using public transportation, which is right there at the Boston Landing Station, as well as carpooling to the extent they need to, and then utilizing the valet stacked parking plan.
Okay. And I know in the past, there's been concern about that merge coming down Lincoln, going up to Everett.
Yes.
Have you heard any concern about that through your neighborhood process?
We, we've been to the neighbors a number of times and we haven't heard any specific concern about that. We have agreed to do some landscaping on the median there and maintain that area.
Okay. And let's just see, and you're looking for relief for signage? So speak to us about signage?
Yes, so signage, if we can see the boards, over here on the left, the church has a symbol reflective of the, you know, religious connotation, which is at the corner of the building and the mesh screen. And then they're also requesting the name Scientology. We've met with David Carlson and other staff from the BPDA and have worked through a number of meetings to have the signage developed. We do understand that the BPDA will take further design review responsibilities around the project, so we're asking that, essentially that the board grant the variances around signage as to height, number of signs, illumination, and size, but then we will go to the BPDA and work out the details and get something that's acceptable for them.
Point out exactly where the signage is going to be.
Sure.
So the signage, essentially, I'm just sharing this set here, is that proposed on Everett Street, the word Church of Scientology?
This is Lincoln Street.
Okay.
And it's here. We've given you a couple different renderings, just to give you a feel for some of the things that we've proposed, but the latest that we got back from Mr. Carlson and BPDA was to have the signage above the first floor window line that says simply Scientology. So it'll be down here, and then have the symbol here and the mesh screen here.
Okay. Okay, because generally, we don't give blanket approval to things at this board, so that's, that's good to know that your thoughts are more focused on Lincoln Street.
Yes.
Location will be determined.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Warren O'Reilly, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services would like to go on record in support with continued BPDA design review, specifically focusing on the signage. So thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Daniel Polanco, on behalf of Boston City Councilor Mark Selma's office, also like to go on record in support.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Megan Camella from Counselor Savvy George's office, we'd like to go on record in support with particular focus on the signage going forward. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Tony Disidora, representing the Austin Civic Association. The concerns that were expressed by the membership included signage, included special events planning, to make sure that they had a concrete plan on how to handle any overflow traffic and people, and ongoing community benefits. They did reach out to us and to the executive board, provided the information on signage. We feel that they have a pretty good plan to handle special events, and we were just told and hoping that they will continue to maintain the open space on Everett Street, across the street by the Everett Street Bridge. They did a nice job initially to clean that up, and we hope that's an ongoing process, so therefore the association is in support.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Mario Perez, representing the carpenters union. On behalf of hundreds, hundreds of our union members that live and work throughout the city of Boston, want to go on record in support.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
I'm going to make a motion to approve with continued and strenuous attention, if that's such a word, to the signage. It's obvious that the sign, where the sign goes is an issue, and I want to make it very clear, that BPDA is going to be, you know, involved in this, and they're going to be the ones guiding you on this, and that we're going to support them on that, so.
And is that Mr. Galvin, Galvin?
Yeah.
That you're looking at a proposed location on Lincoln Street? Yes?
That was the, that was the proposed location, but I'm going to leave that up to BPDA to decide, decide where that sign goes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set.
Before I call the last case for 10:30, are there, 11:30 cases? Are there any deferrals or withdrawals for 11:30?
57 and 59 Hemmard Street.
I'm sorry, Matt, say it again.
Hemmard Street, 57 and 59.
For the record, calling BOA 835-790, 57 Hemmard Street. Name an address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Matthew Echol, an attorney.
Matt, I'm sorry. Are you 59 as well?
Correct.
You're a campaigner, okay. For the record, BOA 821-722, 59 Hemmard Street. Go ahead, Matt, sorry.
Good morning, once again, Matthew Echol, I'm dragging to Skano with the business address of 15 Broad Street here in Boston. At this point, we're still in the process of revising the plans and redesigning the building, so we're seeking a deferral to possibly late November, if that works for the board.
You can do that.
May I have a motion?
Motion for deferral.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please.
11:27.
Thank you very much.
Counselor, address, please.
139 Walter Street, Roselandale.
For the record, calling BOA 765-159, 139 Walter Street. Name an address for the record, please.
Joseph Lickblow, representing the proponent, 50 Congress Street in Boston. We're requesting a deferral because the proponent is still working on a structural engineering plan at the request of the Parks Department and the BPDA, and the report is simply not finished.
Motion for deferral.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date?
You also have a date of 11:27. 11:30. Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for 11:30? Hearing number call the last case for 10:30, calling BOA 843-413, 26 Hitchborn Street. This is to change occupancy from 20 residential units with ground floor retail space with 26 spaces to 23 residential units. Change the first floor retail space into three studio units on the ground level, and add 10 stacker parking spaces in the first floor garage to increase the parking by 26 spaces, from 26 spaces to 36 parking spaces. Violation of Article 51, Section 19, a multi-family dwelling is forbidden, and Article 51, Section 56, off-street parking is insufficient. Name an address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. I'm Agent George Francis, attorney to business address 350 West Broadway, South Boston, building by James Christopher of R.C.A., project architect, manager. This matter was approved by the board in the May of 2016. It's a 20, a new 20-unit residential building with a ground floor retail space and 26 parking spaces. The, at the time it was approved, there was a, a strong calling from, from the city for there to be commercial space, retail space at the ground floor level of the building. At the time, what recalls, this conversation going on about Guest, I'm sorry, Hitchborn Street is essentially an elbow that runs from Arthur Street down to Beacon Street. There was talk of this portion of Hitchborn Street actually being extended up through private property here to Guest Street, connecting the connector. The thought was there would be pedestrian activity there that could support the ground floor retail use in this building.
All right, see what you're drawing, what you're referring to?
Sorry, on the board's return page, the aerial here drawing is the, of the site. So you can see that it's, it's an L-shaped, Hitchborn Street is L-shaped. So at the elbow there is the, is the property site. And the thought was that there might be the connector between Guest and Hitchborn, which didn't happen. And all the commercial activity in this area is up towards Guest, Guest Street area. The building was built, my client has been able to operate it, to retail it, with, he, you know, went through the VRA, they were commissioned through, you know, the project change process, to change those, change the retail space into three studio units.
And what are the sizes of the units?
The sizes of the units, they range from 472 square feet to 675 square feet.
So just doing a one-bedroom and a studio, so that the unit wasn't that small, that 472?
It's a bit deceptive because, again, when this was approved, because of the height of the first floor, owing to the fact that it was programmed for both the garage and the retail, these units, that's the square footage of the footprint of the unit, but they have lots.
Okay.
So there's actually loft space above.
So there's loft space.
So they're actually quite a bit larger in terms of the, the real size of the unit.
Okay, and tell us about the parking?
So the parking, again, as this morning, as the building got built, you know, at the time, even two years ago, automated lifts were not as prevalent as they are now. My client opted to, would like to have lifts installed so that you can increase the parking by 10 spaces, bring it up to 36. This is Article 51, off-street parking, off-street parking requires a conditional work. Units is 2.0, so it's still a violation cited, but obviously we're getting much closer to that with 10 additional spaces. There's no change in the floor area ratio. This citation here is a forbidden use. It could be an extension of forbidden use, but the fact is since the permit issued.
Because it's, it's an L1 district, so that.
Exactly. And ISD, the reason why we couldn't even do this board final order is since the permit issued, ISD required a new permit application to accomplish these changes.
How are the plans, Mr. Bosani?
Your drawings are adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Warren O'Reilly, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Daniel Polanco, on behalf of Counselor Mark Seale, also like to go on record in support.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Megan Kamel from Councilor Savi George's office, who'd like to go on record in support.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Paul Sullivan.
This is Counselor Judge Michael Flaherty, counsel to go on record in support.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set.
Case for 11:30, calling BOA 843-578, 128 to 136 South Street. This is to reinforce the column, install new floors, re-point brick, change occupancy to retail store liquor sales and takeout restaurant. Violation of Article 55, Section 16, takeout restaurant is forbidden, Article 55, Section 16, the liquor store is conditional. Name an address for the record, please.
Francisco Fernandez, 120 South Street, Jamaica Plain.
Can you tell, that's, that's, that's taping, it's not a mic. So speak up, please, okay? Will you be speaking? Okay. So we remember all that happened in the past. What has been resolved since then?
Oh, we had, we got an engineer to come and measure and give us what to do. And we already started the, had a permit to do the work to cover, to stop, to put installed long-term insulation panels. I already got a sketch about what it's going to be. And the structures are already, the structure that holds the salting panels is already installed. We're just waiting for the, the panels to be received from when somebody's going to start it. It's supposed to be received tomorrow, so anytime this week it's going to be a installation. Actually, install the panels.
Okay. Because, because as I recall, nobody was opposed to the uses that you were provide, you were proposing, but there was concern with the, the AC system or the ventilation system? Or the fridge?
Yes.
Yeah, cooling system. Cooling system, yeah.
Yes, and that's the only thing they were opposing, they were only were, not opposing, but.
Concerned about.
Concerned about.
So have you?
Faces of everything of, of, of the structure being only made.
So have you been in conversation with the abutters so that they're aware of the updates?
Yes, and one of the abutters, I spoke to them, maybe last, last week, end of last week, and because she saw the structure already made, but there's still noise coming out. And I explained to her that the structure's made, but the panels are not installed yet. The panels is what prevents the noise from leaving. And it's completely includes sides and on the top, so that the noise bounces to the front.
To the street.
To the street, exactly.
Is the fence still up that was surrounding it? Is that fence still up or?
Yeah, the fence is still up because it's, it's more support also. And there was living on each side.
But you had, you put more extra paneling in?
Yes, I had pictures of.
Did we see that?
Yeah.
Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Alexandra Valdez, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to echo our support once again. A lot of the neighbors have sent many letters of support, as well as their support to have Happy Supermarket proceed in our neighborhood, saying that it's something that's very needed. I know that they have been working with the abutters and as well as the Neighborhood Council to get, to get to the point of the, of the issue. And again, echo our support from the Mayor's Office.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Hi. My name is Janet Beaton. I live at 10 Boynton Street. I am an abutter. We have not worked with the mayor's office whatsoever about having the support. I did go to a yard thing that they had to understand that, what was going on. But anyway, Happy's Market is in violation of excessive noise and we.
We covered this before.
Right, but this is from, this is when the person came out and did the excessive noise.
So this is the official?
This is the official that was done after we spoke.
Okay.
And I tried to work with him to get an acoustic engineer out there. And he said he couldn't get one out there because of the date. So I'm just explaining that he was, he's been dragging his feet since July 19th after our thing about, now, we've been living with this for nine months. It's absolutely maddening, the noise. So if I could, could I give you a copy of the result of the excessive noise? And he just came to us two weeks ago to say that he's enclosing the refrigeration units. We went and asked him, my sister went and asked him on Friday, because they need to have acoustic panels on it, and it's just set up in plywood and manufactured. And we were hoping to work that this would have been completely resolved by the time we came here, so we could be in support of his takeout restaurant, which would add another exhaust fan and more noise. So my, my plea is that you defer this until the construction is completed with the side panels and that Ms. Raymond can come out again and do an assessment of the noise from the six refrigeration units.
Just a question, this, August 13th, this is done before the work that is being.
Right, so we, I had discussed, I had discussed with Francisco Fernandez, and he said that he wouldn't be able to get an acoustic engineer out.
Yeah, I just, yes, no questions.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, so you got your response? Any, any other information? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Is all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries. It's been, the, the use request has been approved.
So what happens after?
Hold on, hold on. So of course you need to continue your conversations with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services and with your abutters, because it's just good karma, okay? Just make it work so that you're a good neighbor in the community, okay? Thank you.
Calling the next two cases, calling BOA 754-552, 34 to 36 Williams Avenue. There is a companion case, BOA 754-553, 38 Williams Avenue. This is a subdividing of Lot 36 Williams Avenue, Hyde Park. The lot will have a total of 8,703 square feet. The new subdivided lot at 38 Williams will contain 6,585 square feet to accommodate new construction. Violation of Article 69, Section 8, lot width is insufficient. Article 69, Section 8, side yard is insufficient. This is for 38 Williams Avenue. It's construction of a new two-family house on a lot next to existing family house. Violation of Article 69, Section 8, two-family dwelling is forbidden. Article 69, Section 9, the lot width is insufficient. Article 69, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Members of the Board. My name is Ronnie Baez, and I'm the owner of 36 Williams Avenue, Hyde Park. And the proposed project consists of the subdivision of this parcel and development of a two-family house on the unoccupied adjacent lot. After our initial hearing back in May, we went back and revised the project plan and removed some of the zoning violations that we had. And we also made additional adjustments to the proposed parking plan. We were able to remove one of the variances and reorganize the off-street parks, but propose individual lots to ensure that they each stand on their own. As you can see on the pamphlets that I obtained, that on the updated site plan on Exhibit 3, the new property line division, basically splits the parcel right down the middle.
So tell us, so this, this, at 38 Williams Street, this was a two-family home? No, no, no. Tell, tell us, can you backtrack, please?
Sure.
And just explain to us what's happening here.
So at 36 Williams, there's a single-family residence, and there's nothing on the lot adjacent to it.
So there's nothing on 38?
Correct. 38 will be a new address that we proposed after the subdivision.
Okay, so what is, so by creating this subdivision, you're creating violations on the existing home?
That's correct.
Okay.
There are two violations that are created as, as a result of the subdivision. One is the, the lot width and the side yard.
So how, how bad is the side yard violation? What's required and what are you proposing?
The required is 10 feet, and after the subdivision, to accommodate the house next to it, there will be a variance of about, less than six feet. It's 5.8.
So you're bringing, bringing it down to 5.6?
5.8.
Five, pardon? 5.8 feet?
Yes.
Okay. So then, please explain 38 William?
So 38 Williams will be, will be built in a lot of 8,301 square feet. It will be a two-family house, two condos of equal floor plans. And it will be assigned parking spaces accessible through a proposed carpet on Highland Street.
How are the plans, Mr. Bosani?
I'm trying to figure out how the parking works on Highland Street. You can see on Exhibit 3. Exhibit 3. Okay. Drawings are adequate.
And is this stick built?
Yes.
Any other questions from the board?
What's the existing parking for 36? Is it tandem alongside the left of the house?
Correct. That's, the existing carpet was there when we purchased the house.
Any other questions? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal? Is anybody here to speak in opposition?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Brian Flynn with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, representing Hyde Park. I'm going to go on record in opposition at this time. It was deferred, and we were just hoping to see newly revised plans brought back to the neighborhood, which did not happen. However, so we have to oppose at this time. We also feel a two-family is too dense for that lot. And so we can't support it this time. But Mr. Baez has been very pleasant to work with throughout the process. Thank you.
I just have one question. What zoning district is this?
It's 1F6,000.
1F6,000, okay. Walter?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Walter White, Counselor McCarthy's office. For the same reasons, the Mayor's Office, the community, the, if there were changes made, they weren't brought back to the neighborhood. So from a neighborhood's perspective, the same conditions exist. And so for that reason, we, we'd like to go on record and oppose.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Megan Kamel from Councilor Savi George's office, who'd like to echo what said before with concern over the changes that not bring back to the neighborhood.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Paul Sullivan.
Counselor Judge Michael Flaherty. Echoing sentiments in the Mayor's Office, Counselor to go on record in opposition.
So what happened with that miscommunication?
Well, initially, the plans that we brought in, in May, you guys suggested some changes to the parking, which.
But what happened back, going back to the neighborhood?
The, we actually received the plans like last week, because the, the land surveyor was delayed with all the type of work that were going on, so they couldn't get back to us on time, so.
Can you, can you go for a deferral? Can you meet with the neighborhood?
Yes.
We could, yeah.
Okay, why don't we, I want to make a motion for.
I wasn't aware of the opposition.
I'm going to make a motion for deferral.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please?
When do they meet again? When would they be meeting again?
The month of approval will be next month.
Next month?
Yeah.
What date?
It's the 3rd month of the month, so when is that?
November.
So, we're looking at November 13th.
Okay.
So, was there a motion?
A motion for, yeah.
There was a second?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the date is 11/13.
Thank you very much.
11/13, yeah. Thank you. 11/13. The last case for interpretation, BOA 845-078 has withdrawn. I make a motion for denial without prejudice.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Meeting is now adjourned.